Good evening, everyone. My name is Laura Schifrin and I'm calling the May 8th, 2023 Planning Board Meeting to Order at 6:34 PM. Sorry for this slight delay. First, I'd like to call them. I'd like a roll call vote, please, and when you state your name, say here or present.
Robert Theron here.
Andrew Shepherd here.
Laura Schifrin, present. Next, I'd like to do the Pledge of Allegiance, please, join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all and thank you to our members of the military that are serving now as well as our emergency assistive individuals. We couldn't do anything without any of you. 1.3 Chairman's additions or deletions. The only thing I'd like to do, because I know we have a little bit of time before the hearing or the appointment, is I would, well, first like to welcome Andrew Shepherd as a fully seated member of the planning board. We look forward to your input. I appreciate your volunteerism. Also, I would like to take out of order, if the board pleases, 4.1 under correspondence, volunteer response forms, and do I have a copy?
Yes, you do. It was in the first packet that we picked up on Friday.
Well, if I don't run into it, since I have mostly the stuff on Okay, I don't have it in front of me, but I did read it. And the applicant to fill the vacancy for the associate member is Michael Brasco. And many of you will know that Michael was a seated member of our board and his term expired. He was not able to run for the full term, but he is more than willing to assist as the associate member.
That's great.
So I'll entertain a motion to move to the Board of Selectmen that they appoint Michael Brasco to the position of associate member.
Aye, second. So, second.
Okay, any further discussion? The only discussion I want to say is when it goes to your next meeting, will you be appointing him immediately for a year? Or will it be a year from June 1st or June 30th? How does that work on me?
If you're appointing tonight, or you're recommending tonight, we'll appoint him from the day that we take it up to the next election, usually is how it works. Or you can set a term.
Madam Chair, if I may, this is for the associate position. So this, I believe, expires on June 30th of 2024. Not at the election, because it's not an elected position.
Right. So, having said that, can we request that his position go to the following on June 30th of 2024?
I would submit that to the Board of Selectmen with that request, and then I'll talk with town council.
Okay. Is the board okay with that? How many meetings do we have between now and June 30th, Seth?
That's a good question. I think there are three.
Yeah, yeah. We'll do that with that side note to recommend to the Board of Selectmen that they consider appointing our associate member through June 30th of 2024.
Okay.
And so that's the motion.
Aye, second.
Okay. Is there any further discussion now? Okay, hearing none. I'll entertain a motion. I'll entertain the vote now. I'll do a roll call vote, state your name. Do I have to do that where there's nobody from the board online tonight? No, right? I don't, only if one member.
Your quorum is present.
Our quorum is present, okay. Then you can just say yes or no.
Yes.
Yes.
And I say yes. That motion carried. Thank you. Thank you. Oh, 1.5. Okay. Reorganization of the Planning Board. Carol is not here. And so we need to vote for a chairman, a clerk, and a vice chairman. And generally, the new member gets to be clerk. Are you good with that?
Sure.
And I'll tell you that most of that is just the correspondence that we get in. And then that's usually at the end of the meeting. Okay. So I'll entertain a motion for Andrew Shepherd to clerk.
Aye, second. Robert Theron.
Robert made the motion. I'll second it. I can't make a motion. I'll second it. Any further discussion? No? All those in favor, say aye or yes.
Aye.
And aye. Congratulations on being elected. I'd like to make a motion that we make. This is, can I make a motion if somebody's not here? Make Carol Vice Chair? I have talked to her in the past. I think that she would be willing to do that. So can I do that, Beth?
Sure.
Okay, I want a motion to make Carol Hostet's Vice Chair.
Sure.
Is there a second?
Aye, second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll entertain a vote.
Robert Theron, yea. Aye.
And yes. So Carol, upon acceptance, will be Vice Chair. And do you like to be Chairman?
Absolutely. You're doing a great job.
Then I'll entertain a motion.
Laura, you can be Chairman.
Okay. I guess no further discussion.
And that much was supposed to run.
I got it. Okay, I'll take a roll call vote.
Robert Theron.
I'm sorry, you really didn't need to say your name. And I said yes. Okay, so I'll be Chairman for this next year.
Congratulations.
Yeah. Thank you all very much. Okay. My message begins at 6:45. We've got actually two minutes.
Beth.
Beth? Yes.
I have this for you.
Oh, thank you. Thanks.
You can be here.
Yeah, leave it in that blue folder, please.
Okay.
And then, Robert, you also have an application in that blue folder with some site plans. That is for the mandatory referral, okay? You're in charge of that tonight, okay?
I'm sorry, can you tell me this again?
The mandatory referral on the agenda. It's Agenda Item 3.2. You have the application in the form, okay? And so you're still the clerk, unless you want to give it to Andrew, but I think we need to. We're going to put it on you tonight.
That needs to stay here. That needs to stay here, right, in Town Hall?
Yeah.
Anyway, I'm sorry to offside track you there.
Okay, we're almost at 6:45. But under business, where votes may be taken, 3.1, I think we're past that, right? It says 2023 Annual Town Meeting and Special Town Meeting Review. That's the report. That's already done, right?
It's done. It's done, but for those who maybe didn't attend Town Meeting, if you could just talk about the status of the one zoning amendment by law. Did it pass, fail, whatever? For, from the Planning Board's point of view, the warrant article, rather. That's why it's on there. I just figured you could give a recap.
Oh.
On the site, on the site plan review?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Well, that passed.
Excellent.
It's good, right?
All right, great.
Edits that we made.
Yep.
My primary view, part of the bylaw passed.
Perfect.
With discussion. Okay.
Yeah.
Was that all that you wanted to know on that, Beth?
Yeah, I just thought if you wanted to, you know, say, that's fine. That's fine.
Okay.
The only Planning Board thing was that.
All right, we are at 6:45. And Monticuzet Regional Planning Commission is joining us to I'm just going to read this. Mission of compliance with the multi, well, they're supposed to be helping us with compliance with the multifamily zoning district statute under Section 3A of the zoning act here and after MBTA communities. Representative Karen Chapman is here now, and I see Jonathan is also online. So I'm going to let you guys take it away.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. We're glad to be here. And I'm Karen Chapman. I'm the Planning and Development Director at Monticuzet Regional Planning Commission. My colleague Jonathan Boss is here. He's one of our regional planners and he'll be working on this project. I have a scope of services for us to discuss. But first, I want Jonathan to give a presentation on the MBTA communities.
And yeah, great.
Okay, awesome.
All right. So just a, this is just a quick overview of the MBTA communities project that we're going to be working on with Townsend through District Local Technical Assistance. And this is the continuation of the interim action, Compliance and Action Plan that was submitted in 2022, late last year. And this builds off of that prior work where we were working with the Land Use Coordinator in Townsend and successfully got the determination of interim compliance. So the requirements of Section 3A, these might be familiar to some people, but just to reiterate, is to have a zoning bylaw that provides for at least one district of reasonable size in which multifamily housing is permitted as of right. A district of reasonable size shall have a minimum gross density of 15 units an acre. And the second part is not applicable to Townsend, since it is a small adjacent town. So we only have to worry about the minimum gross density and having at least one district. If Townsend doesn't comply with the MBTA communities requirements by the time their interim compliance expires, which would be the end of 2025, December 31st, 2025, an MB community that fails to comply shall not be eligible for funds from the Housing Choice Initiative, the local capital projects fund, or the Massworks Infrastructure Program. And the state has developed guidelines, including sample zoning bylaws to assist with the community compliance for Section 3A.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
So if we don't comply, we'll have penalties to the town?
Yes. As a small city in town, Townsend would lose access to funding through a number of state programs until they either become into compliance at some other point. Or, well, really, that's, that would be the only solution that we've seen so far.
Okay, so so they've given us examples of possible zonings. And if, if we fail to pass any of them, that the aforementioned is the consequence. Is there, but I also heard that they could force a bylaw upon us? And if, if that happens, then are we considered in compliance?
That they could force a bylaw.
Like they would, they would tell us what our bylaw was going to be, is what I'm.
Oh, so go with the sample.
Can we go back to the old screen? Can you go back to the previous screen, please?
Yep.
Continue down. Okay, this is where I have a little concern.
Yep.
And this applies to Townsend specifically. A, Townsend doesn't have a transit station. And it says the multifamily district should be located with reasonable access to a transit station, which we don't have, or an existing street patents, which we do have, pedestrian connections and bike lanes, which we do have, or near an existing village center or an area of concentrate development. I have a real problem with the area of the village center comment and the area of concentrate development.
Just for clarification, Jonathan, did you say that this lower portion does not apply to us?
Um, there's still the spirit of wanting it to be in an area where people are going to have access to transit. But Townsend is a small adjacent community and there's no existing built up transit station of any other type. So in in theory, as long as there's reasonable access to just, you know, foot traffic, streets, you're not parcelling it off into a tiny little corner of the community that doesn't have any roads built out towards it or is completely undeveloped and hasn't been touched for who knows how long. Because the idea is, the driving impetus is to create effective housing for viable, for viable populations.
Jonathan, my question is, what we're seeing on the screen right now, is this a mandate that I'm looking at?
No, this is.
Is it a guideline or a mandate?
Yeah, this is, this is more in line with a guideline.
Okay. So in that context.
Yeah.
What's being addressed here? And in particular, the phrase is an existing village center or an area of concentrated development. Well, we have three village locations. They are, are in an area of concentration. However, they're the very things we're trying to protect and preserve in terms of keeping the character of the town. So what you're asking to do something here is totally not within the intent of this community to try to preserve these villages. Because that kind of density in these areas would have a visual and emotional impact on the community. And so that's the part I have. I don't have any problems with designating other locations that don't don't have that kind of impact. But here, what you're asking us to, if I, if this becomes a mandated thing that we have to put in our village centers or in our concentrated areas, that doesn't work very well. Plus, the other thing you have to recognize is our existing villages and our areas of concentration already don't have the kind of land availability to even accommodate this kind of 15-unit density per acre. Most of these lots are smaller lots. We have considered other locations. And I can suggest some to, you know, I was going to advance on this with the people in Townsend directly, but so my concern here is, even though I can see the pressure to put these in these concentrated areas, the definitions of these things, I find very not desirable, I guess.
Okay. Okay. Chad, Steve, and Karen, okay? Everybody hit their hand up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to let the Board know that there will be a transit station located here at Town Hall. More importantly, once we get it built, it'll be down there. We have an agreement with MART to be able to join the Pittsburgh Railroad Line here. So as far as it's reasonable access, so it will be in town right down here. It'll also be in access for the bike lanes and all of that kind of stuff with parking.
Well, what I'm, what I'm seeing here, I think everybody wants to make this happen. I think there's a lot of different. I think we need a community workshop with all the departments here so that we can establish some common goals. So the transit station in itself is a positive thing and that will help a lot. But we also have to look at in perspective is where can we put that kind of density around where we're thinking of putting the transit station? So we're also, this, this board, this planning board has to deal with other overlay district things that are happening. And there's a lot of input coming from our housing authority, a lot of input coming from our infrastructure departments. So in order, I don't want to hastily draw up something or foresee going in one direction when we haven't had a full perspective from all the town departments and everybody that may be implicated by this. So that whatever we do, do is a workable, reasonable, and realistic.
Okay, thank you, Robert. Okay, you want what?
Just to maybe address some of Robert's concerns there. That is, in large part, what this DLTA is about, is about working with Townsend to develop the most, I guess, suitable zoning district in whatever form that takes for the community to be compliant with the MBTA communities, but also to meet the needs of the communities without necessarily causing too much disruption to the existing community environments. So that's, that's really what this is, this is about. Because we're going to be workshopping a lot of back and forth to make these, this compliant district as suitable as possible.
We're not making any decisions tonight. This is like a work session.
No, but I.
And, and the path of how we're going to get to where we need to go.
There's also communication with them to express our concerns right up front, so that we can start working in that direction. I still, I still believe it's important initially, in its early planning stages, to have a community workshop with our other departments so that everybody has been included and everybody, we can get their perspectives. I know there's no perfect answer for anything, but we have to come up with the best we can and doing whatever we can. So I am really formally asking, with the assistance of this board and a representative from the Selectmen's Office now, that we encourage getting a workshop together. So we have different departments here that have specific focuses, but that doesn't necessarily mean that it works well for another division or another department or another regulatory board.
We agree with you. We agree with you.
Thank you.
Todd. I'm sorry.
He's got a bunch more to go.
I know, I know.
But I've gone through these before. If I did it with the master plan, that's what this whole process is. You're bringing people in, you formally go through, you go through the scope of work. They set up the meetings with all the departments. They have interviewed them before any decisions are made. We did the same thing with the master plan. Then we had meetings, multiple meetings with all the different groups. And then you work with, with them to come up with the final plan. But everyone does, on these sort of things, have input before anything's put to paper.
Great.
So that's this whole process. Now I will let Dave finish his presentation.
I was just pleading for help.
I'll let Jonathan finish his presentation.
All right. So just to continue on, just to do a brief overview of Townsend's requirements. Townsend must create, but not build, a dense multifamily zoning to be compliant with Section 3A. The deadline for this is December 31st, 2025. There's no requirement for a specific location of compliant zone in Townsend. The zone will have to accommodate 170, or at least 178 multifamily units at a density of about 15 units, 15 units an acre, or approximately 12 acres. The community zone has to be as of right and cannot have restrictions, such as being age-restricted housing. You can use an overlay zoning district, although you're not required to. And the zone does not actually have to be contiguous. You can do it in two separate parts, or you can do it in smaller, broken up parcels, if need be. But there are limits on how small those can get. But it doesn't have to be one contiguous parcel for the, or zone, for the district.
For the whole 12-acre thing, you mean?
No, for 178 units.
Yeah, they wanted the same.
Yeah, I, okay.
Yeah, in this case, yes. So you could do, if you found land that was suitable, that was maybe seven acres on one side, and then you found another five-acre parcel, you could do those as one zone.
I get it, okay.
So it gives the community a little bit more flexibility than having to look for one larger chunk of land in this case. This is just a brief snapshot of Townsend's current housing unit density by parcel. The majority of housing units in Townsend are a single family with an average parcel density of 0.5 units per acre. There are a few select parcels, less than two dozen in total, that do have an existing density of over 15 units an acre currently. But it's either because they are on very small parcels on maybe a tenth of an acre or because they are existing. maybe a tenth of an acre or because they are existing multifamily units in this case. Um, but there are very few of them in the community. Uh, and these are just some examples uh that have been proposed in other areas of Massa- uh of Massachusetts. Uh, this is in the research that was done by Amy Dane, who was one of the um benchmark uh research cases that was uh used to uh promote the MBTA communities legislation. And the next steps that we're gonna be taking for the MBTA communities um compliance process here is we're gonna be uh looking at a whole lot of parcels. Um, we're gonna be evaluating parcels and current and future land use in Townsend for possible sites to include in any uh MBTA zone areas. Uh, determine what type of zoning mechanism to use in Townsend um. And extensive use of the compliance model uh that was provided by DHCD to test the viability of any proposed parcel groups into a MBTA uh zoning or uh district zone. Uh, which has uh built in restrictions uh to some degree that will allow us to accurately um model any proposed areas accounting for um like if it's town owned land, if uh the land, uh land is uh buildable or not. Um, so that will be the mechanism that we use to actually develop the district and also uh submit for um the application for compliance uh by December thirty first, twenty twenty five.
Where are you gonna get your list of properties from?
That is what we're gonna be working with Townsend uh with Townsend on. Um, that is gonna be uh the, probably the most uh involved conversation that we're gonna be having with um the community um as we, as we get input and also as we uh use the compliance model itself to test any proposed parcels uh for viability in the um district zoning.
Okay, so this is, this is gonna be not just town owned property.
It can't be town owned.
Yeah, it, uh, town owned property wouldn't be uh viable uh through the compliance model.
Okay, okay. Todd.
Todd Mulan since he's been at Clumber Road and also chair of the um water water commissions. Um, have a couple of questions in regards to the water. Um, is there any allowance if the communities are septic um and not sewer um to reducing the concentration size? Um, and if not, um, I would like to see on your agenda when you're having these meetings with the town planner that the water department be included because the restriction of our municipal wells um from septic systems and such um needs to be strongly considered. And before you look at any parcel, you need to know the hydrology of it and everything like that. So I, the only thing I would ask is when you start talking to the town planner, you include the water department staff.
We don't have a town planner.
Or, well, whoever's gonna be doing it, your board or whatever, um.
Include the water department.
I I just, I didn't see it on that and I just, I wanna make sure that it's not thought of afterwards that you you're looking at that on what the water demands are gonna be and what the water flows will be.
Jonathan, my understanding on this, I mean, um.
Todd.
Todd, um, the burden on the town is to provide the districts. The burden on servicing the uh, so the, what I had from the conference that we had in Whistler. Um, the burden on the town is to have these districts in place. The burden on the town is not to have these units built in any specific period of time. The response I got at that uh seminar was that irregardless if we have the infrastructure now or not, um, the main objective is to have these districts available for the future, assuming that in other words, it means two separate things. One, the burden of the utilities and the supplies and all the other requirements in the health department and the water department would still be there by and have to be the responsibility of developer. The burden on the town is to provide a place to do that. Um, and so, and then when I asked her more specifically about that, um, they basically said, even though the town may not have the infrastructure to do this, they want them, they want this mandated by the, by two thousand twenty five. Uh, so it's there uh permanently for future. If if, you know, when the town is better prepared or developers have more resources to provide the infrastructure.
I understand that. This isn't about whether the infrastructure will be there or not. It's a talking about protecting the sources from future contamination. We are a septic community. We are not gonna be, ever be a sewer community, community. We don't have an outflow spot. So my whole point is if you're going to do something, you do it correctly from the get go and you don't put it in a spot where it is upstream from the municipal wells. That's all I'm asking. The one who would know the most about that when you start these talks would probably be the superintendent. Not talking about ready, infrastructure being there or not. I'm talking about setting it up so we don't have to build another twenty million dollar plant if this ever was built on. And I understand, all we have to have is the plans. I'm well aware of the whole, the whole scope of this and everything. But if you're going to set up a, a, an actual district, put it in a spot that if it ever is de- developed, that that it, it doesn't hurt the water, the water resources.
That's just compli- what I've been suggesting here, okay? And that is having a community workshop. So we have information from the water department and everything else to help us determine what options we may have and what kinds of things that we're gonna be risking. Um, so I, I, I that, I don't know what else to say.
I, I, okay, so part of tonight is to discuss potential locations for an overlay district and the method for compliance. And I think we all, I think we all agree that water and septic for the health, those are gonna be the two biggest things for anything that we do.
Yep.
Anything.
Okay.
My only question was, does it have to be? Can we do smaller units in more parcels?
Yeah, what, yeah, you said something about the, what's the limit on that?
Not the seven and the five thing. That's not gonna work here, okay? And it, it won't be cost effective for a developer either, because if you're gonna put that many, you'd have to put in a big, you know, like a treatment plant
Yeah.
uh for sewage, um, if you wanted to do something like, not that we don't need them, not that they wouldn't either rent or sell, um. But that would be very expensive for somebody to do. So that, that's really my question. Can we go to multiple areas to be compliant? I mean, I hate doing things just on paper. I really do. I mean, you know, we're gonna do this by law, but hey, we're never gonna build on it and we don't have to. That's not my thing. I know that um we got the delay for the bylaw. That wasn't my thing either. You know, we are either gonna work on something that's positive and that means something, or we don't do it at all. My, my opinion.
I agree.
Okay, but, so is that a possibility? Can we be compliant with um you know, increasing our housing? Well, this, this is twofold too for affordable housing as well, although you can't, you can't designate a certain type of housing in this overlay. Again, they're like fighting each other. You know, we want.
I, I don't know how, the, the, again, that's, that's why I think it's imperative that we have a workshop to get the input of all.
Yeah, well, that's gonna, that's gonna happen.
Identify all these different issues you're presenting.
Okay, Chad.
Um, Jonathan, Jonathan.
Yes.
Question, we had, um, the Housing Authority had uh just finished a housing production plan which operated on the forward thought of this MBTA communities. We also did some research in regards to that. Can you make sure that you guys take a look at that and make sure that you've taken that information under, under your guys?
Yeah, absolutely.
Pretty sure you guys have it too, our housing production plan.
Can I please speak?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, Karen, sir.
I'd like to go over the scope of services and hopefully answer a lot of your questions.
Okay, thank you, Karen. I'm sorry.
All right, so um your product is compliance with MBTA communities, obviously. Task one, prepare for a whole kickoff meeting with the planning board, which we're doing here to discuss the scope of services and timeline. And if we had time, we could talk about some areas of town. Um, so then task two is really the biggest task. We use the compliance model. Our GIS analyst has been doing it. We're working with twelve other communities on this, so she's gotten very good at it. And so we'll plug parcels in until it works out and then present that to a working group. And then we can just discuss the options.
Of the smaller, smaller parcels and smaller number of units to maybe be compliant?
Or find the parcels that would work. And so as part of the compliance model, they take out any sensitive, so water supply. I think it goes up to uh zone two.
That's what it does now. All right.
And it takes away habitat, it takes away wetlands, you know, any environmentally sensitive land is rejected. Any town land is rejected, any open space is rejected. Okay, thank you.
That's so everybody else can see it, what's in front of us.
Everybody in front.
Oh, there, okay.
Oh, yeah.
But online, okay. That's all right.
So the compliance model is gonna take out any inappropriate parcels to begin with.
Okay.
And, you know, we're obviously gonna take into account all the other plans. We're gonna look at all the other plans. What have you said about housing? What are your goals for housing? Of course, we're gonna look at all that stuff. And so once we have all that information, that's the time to come to a workshop. Present all the information we have and then people can discuss and make decisions.
So are you envisioning workshops then between May and August?
Yes.
Okay.
I, that's the other problem is the deadlines there.
Well, you have to have a deadline. You have to have a goal. Why are the, why are the dates?
Look at how quickly this is done. It's already made.
I know. Townsend is used to turtle's face place, but.
So, so there's several types of technical assistance you can get. You are under DLTA right now.
So that's this year.
Housing partnership also gives technical assistance. There's other grants that you can get technical assistance. If we don't finish by December, you apply for technical assistance and we move forward.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
If we don't get it all done by the end of this year, you can apply for more technical assistance to continue the process.
All right. Um, well, let's see there. Um, all right, so I guess we're looking at you to lead this.
Yes.
Okay. Um, and so, and I can see the value of getting all this data ahead of time. I appreciate that.
Yes.
Um. So I guess, I, I just, I was a little concerned by August, we have to identify areas where this would happen. Um.
It should be fairly simple.
Okay.
You know, you put the parcel in and it tells you yes or no. I mean, and then you say, oh, try this parcel, or try that parcel.
Okay, well, I guess.
Not many parcels that we're gonna be able to try. I mean, half the town is projected open spaces, so.
Good.
You may end up in one of the village centers, but that doesn't mean like I'm just outside of the center and I have an acre, so I could put fifteen units on my parcel. Right? If you changed it along one nineteen.
Uh.
I mean, there's already condos, there's what, condos now?
Well, I know.
Yes.
I, I.
I'm just, I'm just trying to.
I, I can point out every town where we have density housing. Um, and I don't, I'm not opposed to density housing. I'm opposed to what other impact that density housing
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, and I personally, I don't wanna destroy our villages, okay? That's my personal concern. If they're hidden behind fifty feet of trees, I don't have a problem, okay? So, um.
There's lots of those areas around here.
Well, again, um, but if you apply to an area of Townsend Center, all right, let's just, and I'm just using this as an analogy.
Yeah.
All right, we're gonna be having a transfer station, which is a good thing. Going up Route thirteen on the left side, we already have high density housing there. Um, now let's go right on Main Street. If there's an overlay district where we can get more housing on the underutilized commercial space and and have it mixed use, that's a great possibility there. What I don't wanna see is somebody that happens to have half an acre on Townsend Center um and go ahead and put seven units there. Um, you just know the massing of that kind of structure is gonna have a dramatic impact on what the town looks like. Um, and so finding these areas and with your resources, I think, I feel confident we can do something there.
And we can do it on the fly. We can bring the compliance model here and you can watch us do it. I mean, you know, we can have things ready to go and we just bring up, this is option one, this is option two, this is what this gets you.
Great.
Um, I hope you find options.
And so then, once we figure out where we're gonna do it, we'll just, we'll work on the zoning bylaw. We'll ask you, you know, we'll look in the rest of the zoning bylaws. Do you wanna use these
Right.
um dimensional requirements, or you know, what do you want to do?
So.
The second one's shorter.
Right, one of the things this board's trying to achieve, I don't know if we'll do it. Um, so we wanna address this MBA, MBTA thing very, you know, obviously. Um, but we also have the affordable housing overlay district stuff coming up too. So, uh, and preparing a bylaw for town approval would mean, hopefully, we try to have something structured either for the fall town meeting or the following spring town meeting and assume that the community will approve it as a bylaw. Um, so I, we're in a tough spot here trying to balance all these requirements. And um, so you get anxious. I'm anxious.
I am anxious.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, one more thing about, um, so we we have the model bylaw, so we would draft that and obviously well, I shouldn't say obviously, cause some people don't see this. A, an overlay district is the best solution because you can still use the underlying zone. You know, if your property, you wanna use the underlying or you wanna use the overlay, you're still have that ability.
Can they be all inclusive?
What do you mean?
Overlay and MBTA district?
Yes.
So you, so you mean there's parcels over here, there's parcels over here, and there's parcels over there? Can be the whole overlay district? You just, in the bylaw, you would point out exactly which parcels they are.
The overlay district, what, what happened, what I'm having trouble with or don't understand, I guess, is um, the overlay district is a great thing and that's kind of focused for affordable. All right. Um, and so there's a specific focus and function for that application. And so if you look at the overlay district and the requirements for affordable housing, um, the density requirements are so different than what this one is. And so I don't know how. I don't know how you can have one district accommodate both. Because the MBTA district would have to provide the 15 unit per acre standard. Um, and so that housing unit profile. And I think that's a big flaw in this right model, is a simple fact of 15 units per acre. Alright, well, one big problem with that, that doesn't fit all family profiles. Okay, so, um. If you're designing a percentage of units to be three bedroom. Or the town could simply say, we're all gonna make them studio apartments. Well, we meet the 15 unit requirement, but that hasn't accomplished anything.
Um, actually, uh, just a quick point, you wouldn't be able to have them all be studio apartments because they are, um, explicitly multifamily units. So they have to be able to reasonably accommodate, uh, at least two or three people.
Oh, I didn't understand that.
And 10% can be affordable. We can't 10%.
Alright, well.
To get all this stuff out.
Right, I, I'm just pointing out things that. Um, I'm trying to see how it's gonna work, that's all. And if there are any problems, we wanna know about them early.
Correct.
Do you mind if I say, say something? The, the whole key to this is septic systems. You're never gonna have a one acre lot, you're never gonna have a two acre lot. You get 15 units on an acre, you're gonna need two or three acres for a septic system. It's just, it's just plain engineering. So, a, any of this, um, really tight development is never gonna happen. Because it's not possible. I, I can do, I have a license to design septic systems, I can tell you. There is absolutely no way you're gonna get even five or six units on, on an acre. It's not possible, because your septic system has to be so big. And so that's the, that's the key, is septic systems. That's the, that's what's gonna hold you back. You're never gonna, even two or three acres is not enough land to have one of these developments. Cause it's just not big enough.
How many units are, how many units are in Townsend?
Uh, Townsend has to allow for 178 multifamily units.
There's 36 one bedroom units.
Right. And they do a septic system, you can do up to 90 bedrooms and not have to get a treatment sector.
Well, we have the same thing at Country Estates. There's 30 units, there's one bedrooms and two bedrooms, I can't tell you off the top of my head what, how many bedrooms there are, but we've got three systems in there. Two of them are replaced since the building of them. So it can be done, and if you had to have, when you say two to three people.
Um, you have to have a mix of one bedroom, two bedroom, three bedroom.
Oh, okay, okay.
So that you try and hit everybody in the community.
Okay, okay, alright, I, okay. Um, I think it can be done, I mean, you, you, two or three acres and you can have 15 units on it, as, like, one building, you know, like, has been done.
Yeah, at Copper's, they have that, that one that's a barn that's split three units, I think, in the, in that barn.
Yeah, it can, yeah.
And you can have some pretty, uh, stringent, um, open space, uh, requirements, uh, built into, uh, the compliance model as well. Um, so, you can, we can workshop as, as much as we possibly can to see what will work or what, what won't work in terms of just overall feasibility. Keeping in mind that, uh, you know, that restriction of, uh, septic. And also, um, just keeping in mind the community concerns with, you know, the, the placement in the community. And especially with the, the concerns towards the water quality since we are talking about, uh, wells.
Hey, Todd?
Hi, just a quick question, so say you go through the process of down the parcels. What if we don't have any acceptable parcels when we get to the end of it? Look, you know, nothing works, what happens there?
Uh, if, if absolutely nothing works, uh, I would be very confused.
That it doesn't work.
And I guess, is this the best faith effort or?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah.
Go ahead, John.
Uh, yeah, and these, um, thi- this zoning, as much as there is the, 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 you know, the desire to make this. If you're gonna zone it, make it feasible to, uh, build, which is absolutely the right stance to take. Um, if Townsend is desperately needs to and is short of parcels. You can zone it over areas that are already, you can at least partially zone it over areas that are already developed. And have them be developable going forwards with an overlay of being at a higher density. Even if there's no expectation of that ever happening. That's not what we would wanna do. Um, cause it kinda goes against the spirit of the whole thing. But there is that caveat of the only, uh, requirement, uh, Townsend is facing is to zone. Uh, so, you know, we blink our eyes and 2020, the end of 2025 is right around the corner and it's January of 26. Um, I, Townsend is not gonna be in dire straits in terms of all of a sudden being cut off from state funding. Uh, there are still gonna be, you know, avenues of, of approach that you can take in order to make sure that you are compliant. Even if it's not, you know, immediately buildable multifamily housing construction that's available. If it's, if it gets retooled as a redevelopment tool or, uh, or, or a development tool for 10 years down the line. That would still fulfill the MBTA requirements in terms of having the zone exist.
I know it's difficult as a planner to wrap your head around zoning something and then it can't be built. It seems disingenuous to say.
Yeah, it does.
Okay, you can build multifamily here, but you really can unless you put in, you know, spend more money to put in, that's why. But they're asking, is zone it.
Yeah, so, in like, absolute worst case scenario of there's no parcels that work as viable sites currently. And you, we spent two years banging our head against a wall and we haven't come up with anything. You can zone it with the expectation that it's not going. That, that none of these units are gonna be built in any feasible, uh, with any degree of feasibility within the next decade or more. Uh, but as long as that zone exists, uh, and the zone itself, uh, the metrics for that fulfill the compliant, uh, meet all the requirements of the compliance model. You will, uh, currently meet that, um, meet, meet all of those requirements.
Couple of other things that have happened, um, about the penalties of not complying. So I do a lot of green communities applications and they ask in there, are you compliant with MBTA communities? And there's other grants that I've seen where, are you compliant with MBTA communities? I've heard of housing authorities having their money taken away. So, it, it's not just those three.
Yeah.
Grant programs.
I think it's a, it would behoove us as a town to know what the cost factor is. In other words, what are, what are the actual dollars that we're gonna lose because we don't have the zoning? I mean, you can say we're gonna lose this, this, and this, but it doesn't mean anything to the average taxpayer in town or voter in town unless they know what the number is.
Right.
I mean, what does it matter?
Does anybody know of those three that were listed, how we actually get?
We do, I mean, we're working on projects now, especially the mass, uh, mass works is part of a sidewalk project that we're doing.
Yeah.
For the, for the trails.
And you have to be compliant.
Um, there's, there's a lot of, we're trying to get onto the housing choice and housing choice has its specific, um, criteria to get there. And we're slowly building to make, meet that criteria to be on the housing choice. That allows us to be able to get first crack at certain grants that we didn't have the opportunity to before, so yes, those are major projects that we.
Um, I, I pointed out some of the conflicts here with these districts. The other thing that comes to mind is, right now, the entire Commonwealth is under a mandate to provide 10% of its housing units to be low income. So, what's going on is we have all these different people that have all these different requirements. And I'm not even sure Townsend has been able to even deliver the 10% low income that we're already on the mandate.
We lost.
Yeah.
Oh, no, we're like, you're under 4% now.
Yeah. So, I mean, like. What are we supposed to do?
You're not the only one.
But we're not the only ones.
There's people at zero.
Yeah, there are, uh.
You just do the best you can.
We have been actively, actively showing the state that we're working on it. And they've, they've, we've submitted our five year plan and they're agreeing that we are doing things, I mean, we can't. We've presented many times in, in town meeting and we've been shot down, what, four or five times already? But the state sees that we're doing something about it, so they're not gonna, they're not gonna do anything.
Ah, okay.
You feel better now?
Oh, I gotta forget it.
So the, this other zoning to be compliant with is going to be important for other things that we wanna do. That we would like to get funded for in the future. So.
Now, I believe that the timeline right now is, is, you know, I'll speak with, uh, for the housing authority. Um, there's a lot of, of, as, as Robert had pointed out, there's a lot of other departments that have done some work. And I think this is an opportunity that we all can get together and put our ideas into the hat so that we have a unified force with MRPC.
Yeah.
Pull it all together for us, because this is what we've needed for a couple of years now.
Yes, exactly. And we don't have a town planner either, so that even makes it more challenging.
We will.
We are the town planner.
Yeah, we are, alright.
Am I first, or someone starting?
Hopefully.
We're always here.
Mm-hmm.
I, I didn't wanna interrupt you.
That's okay, um, yeah, and it just goes on to talk about editing the zoning bylaw and the map and, and coming to your public hearing if you need us to. Going to town meeting if you need us to, all of that stuff. Um, I would encourage you to reach out to CHAPA, you know who CHAPA is? Citizen Housing and Planning Association. They, um, are providing outreach for communities. For board members and employees to learn about MBTA communities, they'll do a Zoom meeting with whoever you want or.
Oh, okay. And that on our list of people to come to our meeting, that would be great.
And so then if it passes at town meeting, we'll fill out the determination of compliance application for you to submit to DHC.
Okay.
I don't expect that, but I just remember, but if I say it'll come true.
Well, it depends on what you find, more parcels, you know, and how quickly you do that, and then deciding on overlay which we want.
That's a great help.
And I, I'd like to shoot for having that workshop meeting, whatever, in June before people start to go on vacation. Then we can have all the information that we need from the people, the public input, that we can go back and do everything to do.
Do you want that in a form of a public hearing at a planning board meeting, or do you want a Saturday? What are you, what are you thinking about workshops?
What you think people will show up at?
We can survey that with the boards.
Yeah.
A public forum, yeah.
Center that we did before worked really well.
So who advances that, would you do that?
We all would.
Yeah.
We would all, we would all work together.
When we're ready, we reach out to Eric or Sabrina and say, you know, we need a room.
Well, we could do the senior center for parking and everything, that would be better.
Yeah.
That's where we've had forums before.
Uh, our housing forums worked really well there.
I think, doesn't the library have a community room too?
Well, I called them the same thing, I'm sorry, library senior center. And now they have a new room, I don't think I've been in it either.
The addition?
The addition. So, anyway, it's, it's got a lot of parking there and more room and it's like, just on one floor, I think that's probably easier for everybody to access. Um, something like that, and we'll try to pick a date in June. And a time, it just, just, well, it stays later lighter, lighter later. So, we could have it an evening, wouldn't have to be on a weekend when people are doing other things.
Yeah, maybe we could do, uh, like a 5:30 thing and provide like snacks or something.
Yeah, sure. 5:30, 7:30 or something, 30 to 8.
With that, we had snacks.
Yeah, cause if you don't have snacks, people will like, get angry and they just don't wanna be there.
Yeah, you gotta feed them. Okay, so.
Feed them and they will come.
Yeah. Yeah, alright, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, really, thank you.
Be in touch.
Sure.
Alright.
Jonathan is the leader of this project.
Yeah, I will be the point of contact, so if you, uh, have any questions, uh, from the planning board, uh, please feel free to reach out to me at any time. Uh, about MBTA communities. Um, and I will, I will get back to you as soon as I have an answer. Um, I believe, uh, Eric is currently the point of contact for Townsend on this, although I have been talking, um, with Beth. And then hopefully, this new planner as soon as they start, so we will, we will have that dialogue ongoing.
Right, um, well, Beth's very, very, uh, you know, very useful source for us, so. Uh, whatever you do, if you CC her or whatever, um, we'll get, we'll be sure to get the information.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
We'll be in touch, thank you for coming.
Have fun. It's fine, you know.
I'm sorry. You're ready to leave?
Okay. Um. So, I really apologize, because I thought I was gonna be more organized and ended up with a little emergency that took me two hours before I got here, so. Um. So now we are going to 3.2, ZDA referral request for 22 Main Street application. Um, it's, it's not in my book, it's 3.2, no, nothing's in the book.
Um, Robert has the, uh, application and the referral form. It should be right there. It's a zoning board of appeals application, says 22 Main Street, Best Friends Veterinary Hospital, and there's a site plan with it.
Oh.
Or it could be right in front of you on the table, I'm not sure, but the site plan is a.
Oh, here it is.
Yeah, so the same site plan that you saw for site plan review special permit is been resubmitted for the, uh, variance application to the ZDA.
Okay.
And, uh, it's exactly as, uh, was asked for in the condition of the site plan review. That the applicant applied for a variance with the zoning board of appeals to place the handicap parking in front of the building, which is in the front yard setback. So the application is there, um, everything is in order in terms of administratively. The public hearing did have to get, uh, moved, it is now Wednesday night, May 31st. Um, but if the board has any comment, I'll be glad to bring it to the planning, uh, to the ZDA hearing.
Okay. Alright, so, and, like, she's seen any?
And that looks familiar, I'm sure.
Um. This is, this is where they wanna put the handicap spot, well, van parking right here. And normally, or it might have gone back here, but just for some re- And normally, or it might have gone back here, but just for some reason, for a turnaround and that was the best place they could instill be in the front of the building. So they're doing a wheelchair accessible, I guess, to that door. Did you want to say anything about this, Robert?
Yes, you know.
Yes, I know, so I'm asking.
I, uh, I'd like to make a motion that we delay acting on this until we have the results of the approval of the driveway from the Mass Department of Public Transportation. Um, so I, um, you know, this project is has had an insurmountable number of requests for relief and, and special permits and variances and, um, and so I see the applicant here going through a lot of expense, uh, trying to get all this stuff done. Um, and it's taken a lot of time from this board trying to address every one of these typical topics. And I have really some strong reservations that the Mass Department of Public Transportation will find that driveway location acceptable on the state highway. Um, and so I personally, uh, recommend and suggest that we even delay this conversation or this topic until we hear from them.
Um, okay, Robert, thank you for your, um, your opinion on this. And I understand that it's been frustrating for all of us. However, this particular point was a condition of the
Site Plan Review.
That we gave her, the Site Plan Review permit that we gave her. She is following the condition. The, the permit also states that, and we recommended that night, that she's not going to do any paving until that, um.
You are correct, Rob.
You know, the state comes through.
I remember that.
So we're holding, if, if she's trying to comply with the, um, conditions that we placed upon her.
Yeah.
We need to respect that. And she knows that she can't go further until she has that state approval anyway. That's what, that's not within our.
I withdraw my comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, so on this, I guess I would entertain a motion that we, um, submit to the zoning board, um, that we agree with, uh, her getting a variance for the handicap spot in the front of the building. And, uh, she, by doing so, she is following what we asked her to do on the condition for the permit.
I second that.
Second. Okay, so you're gonna first it, he's gonna second it, but that's okay. I can make a motion. I'm just helping Beth write the motion.
All right.
Okay, a- am I correct in that, Beth, or did I say something wrong?
No, you're correct. And, uh, Robert, could you write the motion on that form, please? While you, the comment form?
Yeah.
And then Barbara can sign it.
Oh, what do you want to, I better write the motion.
You will.
Um.
Or just write your comment and vote on it.
I just wrote, uh, motion was made and seconded to approve handicap parking.
Variance or?
In front of, in the front of the building for Site Plan Review.
Yeah.
Comment. Condition. Okay, motion was made, seconded to approve handicap parking in front of the old building per Site Plan Review permit condition.
Sounds great, perfect. And then you can sign it and then you can vote on it if you, if you so choose.
You vote?
You affirm it.
Okay.
I favor it, yes, Robert.
Okay, it's voted and signed.
Thank you, perfect. And, uh, you put it in Robert's folder there.
Oh, and then this was with it. Okay, thank you, Beth, for coming on. Three point three, uh, report on MBTA legislation submitted by, uh, Raha. You gave us a, um, very lengthy report. And I thank you for that and I had it. I think I know it.
You should have a copy there.
I do.
So I'm, I know that.
Uh, just nothing more to add, uh, we, we have some more information tonight and I.
Okay. But I thank you for this. It was very comprehensive. Um, I know it's, you're showing us things that you don't like. Because you don't think they belong, but, um, it is very thoughtfully done.
Uh, I think.
Is there any other comment you wanted to make?
No, other than, uh, we had more information tonight. We got to have a hundred and ninety-eight of these units, or a hundred and seventy-eight, what was the number? Uh, I didn't have in that report. And, um, there was another element. So anyway, the information we got tonight really is an update to what I've submitted. Um, and then, um, and I, I think now, I mean, I was advocating that we communicate with the other departments for a workshop, which I already presented tonight. But now we know that the, uh, Ms. Ober Transportation people, uh, and with the, uh, MBTA team uh, is going to take the initiative on that. So, um, they're, they're actually doing exactly what I was asking we do. So, uh, so I have no more to say.
Okay. All right, thank you. And I know it, it takes time to do something with this, so I appreciate your time. Um, three point four, discuss modifications to one forty-five dash fifty-one point one, age restricted development by law. Um, Beth, was this on here before?
Yeah, that's our standing agenda item since the last time it was, uh, discussed.
Okay, and so this was not presented just for a little bit of history, if I'm remembering this correctly. We had a public hearing, we actually had two public hearings on, on this bylaw. And it was at the second public hearing for the, first, I don't remember. That Todd was here from the Water Department. And he made some very good points that evening. And we, as a planning board, have not gone any further with it. Am I correct, Beth?
Yeah.
Correct, yep.
Okay. So. And at this point, I don't.
Think we're prepared to.
I don't think we're prepared to. I don't, I don't think until we get more information from the Water Department um, that we can possibly incorporate in this bylaw. Um, unless anybody else has anything else to say about this? Chaz or anything about how we would look at trying to get this passed?
Well, one forty-five dash fifty-four, is that the groundwater portion of it?
Yes.
No. It's restricted development.
Right.
Age restricted.
Yeah, not the groundwater. There's, and, and what happened was they tried to reduce the acreage to one acre. Um, what else was changed on it?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and that's when it triggered a lot of concern over the water and septic.
Yeah. That's something.
And it was a waiver, there's also a waiver clause in there that was objectionable to a number of people. Granting waivers, the planning board was perhaps too, given too much leniency. Um, but it was Town Council's recommendation, so.
Well, in actuality. Yeah, but in actuality, there are things that can't happen anyway. And I think that's what we were looking at when the bylaw was written, that there's a, there are checks in place between the Water Department Conservation and Board of Health. If you can't satisfy those three issues, you can't do anything. So.
Yep.
But we couldn't get, I, I, we'd have to have Todd come again, I think. And, um, maybe help us with some verbiage that would satisfy them. Because septic and conservation, they've got their, they've got their own thing and you have to just comply with whatever that is. Whatever, uh, developer may come in would have to do that. But because that was such a issue with him, we stepped back from that. There was another issue too that somebody brought up.
Yeah.
But that, the other issue was, um, more just because they didn't want development of any kind. It wasn't.
It was reducing the density there.
Yeah, but, uh, again, we get back to, you know, somebody could have an acre parcel, had it be all sand, super perk, you know, whatever. And the well be in a good distance and you'd be able to put units on that property more so than you might on a five or seven acre parcel.
Yes.
You know what I mean?
So that makes sense.
Yeah, so the, again, the opportunity has to be there. It may not work for every parcel or every person, but the opportunity should be there if it does work.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, and in my notes, it was, um, there was also contention in regards to um, under applicability, see water, uh, public water available at the street frontage. That was another issue that they were brought up, along with the two that you brought up as well.
Well, if the public, oh, well, the, okay, so that's, that's where I think we need Todd
Yeah.
to come in on, because if public water is available at the street, somebody has to pay to have it brought to the property in, for whatever was being built. But, um.
Beth, are you getting the actual?
Yes, this is the last version on the screen now. And I don't remember public water available at the street frontage being an issue. I remember that being strongly supported for this type of development versus well water.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. But that's not everywhere.
Right, but I'm going by E code as opposed to your draft, what's I'm looking.
Okay.
What's E code.
So.
I think the next time we discuss this, we put it on the agenda, ask Todd to come, give him our concerns before he comes and bring suggestions to us. Does that sound reasonable?
Well.
We're not going to make it up. They, they, they need to help.
It does sound reasonable, but what's, what I'm seeing in front of me again is another specialty kind of zoning that's going to be thrown in the pool of all these other zoning requests that are coming from all these different.
Well, this is for age restricted.
Right.
To healthy, affordable housing.
Yeah.
Age restricting is housing.
Okay.
And this is, this is going to go into practice. I mean, we are going to get an application, this is going to come before the board soon. So this is, this is ready to go. Um, it's just that the planning board did want to make a few adjustments and, you know, the adjustments were quite reasonable, it's just a matter of, I'm maybe a little more, you know, tweaking. But I think, I think it's a, a good bylaw, it's definitely a sound bylaw. It's just the few things to get.
I think, I think a lot of this was presented before I was even a member of the board. Um.
Yep.
Yeah, we started a long time.
Yeah.
Well, it's, um, it's, it's in E code, it's already here.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's been voted.
I have no comment then.
Yeah. Okay.
What am I missing here? It's already in E code.
Yeah, it's already been voted on.
It's voted on.
Yeah, we did, you, you just wanted to make changes to what's already been.
Exactly.
Okay. But when we had the changes to it, which are highlighted in that, that's when we had to have a public hearing.
Yeah.
And that's when that failed and we didn't go back. That, this was not put on the warrant.
Correct.
So that's what I mean. I think we need to have Todd come back here and help us massage this that's going to be acceptable to the Water Department. On, on the water part and the part about the, uh, again, I think that we should have the decrease in the zoning if the property complies. If you can get your permits and the Water Department, I don't know, whatever little, whatever they want to write in there or want us to write in there that they have to approve, then we can put it forward. Do you think? It's freezing in here, I know.
It is.
Yeah. Um, okay, Beth?
Yep. Uh, sorry. Sorry, I'm on mute, right? Oh, no. Um, yeah, so the Water Department's primarily were concerned with, uh, Zone Two and aquifer protect, protection. I don't know if you recall, but there was a map presented, um, of the high-yield aquifers and, you know, areas that this type of development should be, you know, steer clear of. So those are the areas that, yeah, if, if Todd Melanson would come back and, and, or I could work with Todd outside a session and, uh, talk about some areas that perhaps we could stay away from. The only problem there is, it's a zoning bylaw, so it's, uh, going to be difficult to restrict the areas that he's concerned about. I don't know how to do that, um, we'll find out. Maybe with some help from MRPC, yeah. Okay, so I'll talk with him.
That be a motion to table? Till a future date or?
Well, we're just in discussion. Three point, three point four is a discussion item and, um, yes, we'll bring that up at the next meeting, keep it on the agenda if you can get from Todd or if he can come for our next meeting.
Okay.
Just going to keep it on the agenda until we get to where we need to be.
Okay, great.
And we have until now when the next warrant. Are you going to try to do a fall meeting instead of a winter? Okay, um, so, yeah, we, if we could just get that done for, for the warrant for the fall meeting.
Okay.
Okay, that'll be the goal.
Okay.
Um, and then three point five, recommendations from Townsend Housing Authority regarding those zoning bylaw applications.
Yeah, those, um, I worked on, uh, draft minutes, I didn't quite finish them from the last meeting. But I bullet, I did do bullets of the important points that you wanted to convey to the Townsend Housing Authority. I just haven't formally put it in a letter of any sort. Do you want, how would you like that to be done? Would you like me just to give them the minutes or, because they have the high points of all the concerns that were, were discussed during the cluster development discussion at that last meeting?
Once, once the minutes are done and we've approved them.
Uh huh.
You just give them that portion of the minutes, that's, well, they. You just give them that portion of the minutes. That's, well, they can know all the minutes, but.
Okay, great. I should have those done by the next meeting then.
Okay, very good. All right, uh, so now we're at correspondence, review volunteer. Well, we already did 4.1.
Yep.
Uh, you two from Board of Selectmen, reorganization of the Board of Selectmen. Uh, congratulations, Chaz. We're, we're honored and privileged to have you with us. And are, are you still gonna be, was it reorganized so that you're our liaison?
We're going to be discussing it in our next meeting, but I have proposed that I stay with the boards that I'm working on.
Okay.
Only because, A, we've done a lot of work and I wanna keep on moving that forward. Um, B, there's some major projects that, that I want, especially with the Water Department, that I wanted to stay, so.
Okay.
I do wanna stay exactly where I have been for the past two years, just to make sure that our projects get done.
Yeah, I think that's great.
One with you guys and, and we've, we've done some other things too with the planning board, so I wanna stay with you guys.
Okay. And housing is important.
Yeah.
Housing Authority, right?
Yes.
Which I found out on the last day that I'm still there. Um.
Well, the, the, the hope is that instead of following tradition, I wanna be able to put the strengths of the board to where they, they lie for, especially in the liaison positions, just to keep things moving.
Yeah. Okay, perfect. Um, 4.3 Conservation Commission, Notice of Public Hearing Townsend Wetlands Regulation is 150. Um, is that in the correspondence?
Yeah, I did put that in the folder a little bit late, but the Conservation Commission has been working on, um, I'll square it, I'll just share it up now. They have been working on chapter 150, um, edits to the regulations. Um, I don't think the board has had a chance to review these, but they started them um, at their meeting in April, when the board didn't meet, so you didn't have a chance to comment on them. Um, but if any of you want to comment on the edits that they've made, I put a copy of the latest version here. Uh, they're not, this isn't approved yet. However, Wednesday night, the Conservation Commission will be meeting to look this over and potentially vote on these changes.
This will come today? This Monday, Wednesday?
Yes, Wednesday night at their meeting. The one thing that I recommended from, uh, the planning board point of view was to add in section M, which similar to our site plan review special permit um, regulations. Um, if you'll see on the screen, I asked them to put in M to circle back to the Townsend General bylaw for stormwater management.
Oh, yeah.
Meeting project, yeah, so projects will be, yeah, caught, not caught necessarily, but evaluated for stormwater management permitting if they're, you know, applicable. So it's just something that was added in. But if there are other comments, um, you can, after your review, can send them to me and I'll convey them to the Conservation Commission, or you can attend the meeting on Wednesday night.
I attended the last meeting where they brought up your insertion, and that was a really good idea.
Oh, thank you, Hannah. Oh, that's quite a bit.
Okay.
So do we have to act on this?
Um, it's only if you have any comments and if you wanted to go to the Conservation meeting on Wednesday and you had any comments for them in anything that was changed.
If we can move it tonight.
Same.
So put them further ahead, right?
Well, we, we don't have to move anything, right?
Well.
No, just if we had comments.
Oh, just that modification you added? Yeah.
And they've already done that, yeah. So that was good. Uh, 4.4 MRPC, public comment, period draft, fiscal '24. UPWP and Transportation Improvement Plan?
Yeah, both of those plans have been published. Um, draft versions have been published. Um, the link is in your folders. They're lengthy reports, but I, the, um, public comment period, of course, is open, um, and I just wanted to make the board and the public aware of that. There's also a link on the Planning Board webpage if you wanna go and, and look at the reports and comment at all. Um, none of the projects this year, unfortunately, um, were funded for Townsend on either of these programs, which is, um, just kind of the way it went. We did apply for the traffic, uh, the traffic study down by the high school, and that was not, uh, funded. So, exactly. We'll have to look for other ideas. Um, yeah, yeah. So you could write that comment if you wanted, in the comment period. Why weren't we funded? Fair enough, right? Yeah. So.
Okay, um.
May I ask a question?
Oh, yeah.
Um, Beth, you are a member of the, the, which committee for that?
Um, MJTC, Monticenturjoune Transportation Committee.
And, and you wanna continue with that?
Yes, yeah.
Cause I think we're, we're, do we have to, do, did you have a term that you were named for or?
Yes, yes. And I'm not sure when the expiration date is. I think it's in, uh, yeah, I'll have to check the expiration date, but I think they renew it in the summer.
Okay, cause I think I have to appoint a selectman to that position, and I just want you still are gonna be on that committee.
Uh, I'm a representative for the Planning Board at this time, yes.
Yeah, okay, all right.
So on that note, I'm the representative to MRPC for the Planning Board, and then you'll also.
Have to look. I just know Veronica was.
I mean, you'll have to appoint somebody
Yeah.
as an alternate.
Yeah.
If I can't make it, but I also need the Planning Board, unless somebody else wants to do it, appoint me
True.
MRPC. MRPC, which is what Karen, who Karen works for. Um. Okay, so I need a motion to appoint me to MRPC. I'm an officer on their executive committee.
Oh, you don't need to do that yet. So you're already appointed. There, there's nothing before you right now for appointment or reappointment.
No, but there will be, there will be in June because, um, they elect the officers in June. I remember last year I was appointed before I, I was elected before I was appointed. I'm just letting you know.
So I typically receive, um, and, and.
A notice from them?
And receive a reappointment notification, and that hasn't come in yet. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't make any motions until we get that.
Okay. That'll be coming in, because they have their, they have their election in June. Um. Okay, 4.5, zero Bayberry Hill Road ID, parcel ID 17-2-0, removal from chapter 61B. Do we have to do any?
No, uh, this is after the fact. Um, unfortunately, the board hadn't met, um, during the time when this was being reviewed, but the Board of Selectmen have acted on it and it's all set. So no actions required, purely informational.
Okay. And then the Townsend Mark Shuttle update?
Yep, um, if you want to look at, Robert, did you get, you have a copy of the bus routes there and the budget? Did you wanna share that with anybody or talk generally about it? There should be a two-page report in there of where we're at with that shuttle. Things look really good. I know at town meeting, everything was approved.
And it's really cool that we're gonna have something like that. It would be interesting to see how, how many people use it.
Well, the budget.
Here it is.
Oh, if you may, yes, you may.
Yes. Chaz.
The, our budget was approved, and in the budget, we did allocate money for, uh, the transportation and that, so the fourth year is gonna be free. And we'll be able to research the ridership and be able to then figure out what we're gonna do to charge after that.
Mm-hmm.
So, I think it's.
And hours and locations gonna be posted?
Yep. Yeah, it'll be where, I'm working right now with the marketing team with Mark to be able to get the information out to all the townspeople on the schedule, where the bus is gonna, you know, meet everybody and the times, what to, you know, the schedules that they can connect down at the, uh, Pittsburgh Transit Station or the Intermodal Station.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah.
So are you working off of the same schedule that we have? Or have you changed the schedule at all? From what? Okay.
Since we, we talked about, that's, that's the schedule that we submitted to Mark.
Okay, good.
They haven't said yea or nay on it, so the next step is to talk with marketing. So I assume that everything, the way we have it, is supposed to be the way it is.
Beautiful. So there is a copy of that in your packet. Um, Andrew and Laurie and Robert, you each have a copy of the schedule and some costing. Um, and the, I, do you have any idea of when the first shuttle might roll, Chaz?
Um, I do not, but you'll be the first to know, Beth, I promise.
I'll be on it. I'll be at that bus stop.
So, are there any schedules?
Yes, there's, there's a morning, um, en route to Pittsburgh, and then there's a evening getting back here, I wanna say around 6:30, 7 o'clock.
Towards Townsend. Towards Pittsburgh.
Oh, okay.
You know, it's a little.
Weekend, which.
Yeah.
Weekends as well, yep.
Yeah.
So part of, I, I, if I can add this to, part of, of what we're gonna be future is getting a grant, and part of the grants is what we talked about earlier, to get the
Oh, you have to be.
bus station and a, in a small parking area down here in the grassy area.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we're gonna be writing a grant for that and the, that, those are the grants that we won't be able to get if we don't continue with MBTA, just throwing it out there.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay.
Um, now the notices from other towns.
Yeah. Yep, one moment. Oh, this is another town.
Is it just like four, five?
One, two, three, four, five, yeah, yeah, about six, seven, about seven of them?
Oh, I don't have that one. Um. Do you wanna just do it, Beth, since?
Sure, I have them in front of me, so that's fine. All right, so, uh, Lunenburg Planning Board, um, I'll hold a public hearing. Again, this has gone by. Do you want me to read just the current ones?
Yeah, just.
Okay.
Words, that's.
You know, all right, um, wow, that's really old. I know that we didn't meet at the end of April, so a lot of these have gone by. Uh, Notice of Decision from Pepperell, ZBA, a special permit for an accessory apartment, um, at 12 Independence Road. That is another Notice of Decision from Pepperell. That's from the ZBA, a special permit granted for another accessory apartment at 1 Reed Street in Pepperell.
Do we, I think this is great. I wish we had more of these. Um, do we know if these particular units were affordable or were they just?
It doesn't say, but I can, I can ask if you want. I can, um, reach out and get those decisions if, if you would like to see them.
I think it would just be good to know if they were doing it for a family, or was it considered affor, towards their affordability? They have more affordable in, in Pepperell than we do. Um, house, so, yeah, I, I, I'd be curious to know that.
Yeah. Yeah, and they're also working on revising their, um, accessory apartment, accessory dwelling unit by law. So, that's going on now. Um, a lot of good information there. I can share that with the board, the drafts.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so the Town of Pepperell Planning Board also has an interesting citizen zoning article for a rate of development by law. Um, this one says they'll be holding the public hearing on Monday, May 22nd to consider a proposed citizen zoning article for a rate of development by law. The proponents of this article are Cheryl Rolsoff and Renee DeGento. The proposed bylaw would limit the issuance of all building permits for construction of new dwelling units to no more than 10 dwelling units in one calendar year, and no more than two building permits for two dwelling units to be issued to an applicant per calendar year. So that, that's all available, um, on the Town of Pepperell homepage, so more information on that is available.
Did they approve that?
Well, uh, the public hearing is on May 22nd for that proposal, and I'm assuming it would be at Spring Town Meeting, cause, uh, our, our annual town meeting's going on tonight, right now. Session two. So I'm assuming that's gonna be a special town meeting. That's all.
And this, this was part of it, MBTA enforcement thing, community zoning law. Okay. All right, um, and our next meeting is?
Oh my, I'm sorry. I have to push that up. What do I have?
On my agenda.
I usually, I usually put it on the agenda. I, I don't know why I didn't on this one. Let's see.
I think so, cause that's my weekend.
Is it June?
Oh, so we don't have anything else in May?
I'm sorry, May, yeah, we do. So the third week, uh, the third week, Monday in May, which is the 22nd. I'm sorry, yeah. I'm way ahead of myself talking about June, so yes, May 22nd. And I'm sorry, I didn't get that on the agenda, but yeah, that is the next one, and then I'll have the June meetings ready for you guys too.
Okay, so June. Um. No, I'm sorry, but I can't do the 5th.
Okay.
Or the 12th. Well, 12th would be really hard. I'll be in Boston all day for real, today on the hill.
Okay.
So, well, I mean, it isn't that I and then we're usually back by five, if, if had to be.
That's true.
Cause I typically have scheduled the second and fourth Mondays of the month, so that would be the 12th and the 26th, so.
Um.
But I'll, yeah.
So, yeah.
Hmm.
Well, it'll be tough for me. I'm at a conference in Georgia, but I might, I might get out and can do it remote, and the 26th I can do.
That'd be great, yeah. Okay, and I'm not sure.
Okay.
Is.
Oh, yeah.
But, okay, we'll, we'll put them in for the 12th and the 26th.
The 12th and the 26th?
26th.
Of June?
Yeah. 26th. 26th, it's Monday. Okay, and, and will you check in with Carol and, um,
Mike?
Mike's availability for them?
Yep. So we still do have a vacancy. So you, did you wanna announce that or that you received a form or?
Yeah, sorry, um, I, we did receive something from the town um, an email that someone was interested, and I reached out two or three times. Um, email, I left voicemail, um, and then email again, and then Beth reached out probably double, that amount of times, and neither one of us got a response, so I don't wanna I, I don't feel comfortable, you know, bringing it forward. Um, so we do still have a vacancy, so we're interested in some, if someone's interested in the Planning Board, and we have lots of meaty things to do. Um, we would welcome, um, anyone's interest in doing that. Anything else to come before the board this evening? Hearing the same none. I'm gonna take a motion to adjourn at 8:25 PM.
I check in, but.
First, second, and we all agree. Thank you, everyone, for attending this evening.